I'm sorry to confuse.
Have a good night, Ben.
Absolutely.
Since it's six o'clock, I'll call the Charter Township of Comstock Planning Commission meeting to order. If you would please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Kyle, are there any changes or anything you want to?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for Comstock Charter Township Planning Commission, Thursday, October 16, 2025 meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes?
We have minutes.
We don't have any minutes.
There's no minutes attached.
No minutes.
On this one either?
Nope.
Correct.
Oh yeah, you're right. Okay, I guess I would entertain a motion to postpone them.
I move that we postpone the approval of the minutes to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against or opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to go to citizen comment and a citizen may state their name and address and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make an appointment with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
Amber Wheeler, thank you guys for all the work that you're doing on this, but you are being snowballed really bad. I've looked up this company. There's a lot more to this. They're not going to keep their promise. You guys go for this. No matter if the state takes it over or not, I'd let the state handle this because your proposed things aren't where this golf course is. They were over there by Midlake and that, right? Am I right or wrong?
No, it's south of 94.
Yeah, but you...
Oh.
You gotta... Look, that golf course makes a lot of money from my understanding. And the people that are over there, I just talked to a couple of them, they don't want it neither. So, you know, I don't know what these people are thinking. Putting our community in danger. You guys really are. That tree line ain't going to stop all that pollution and stuff when they let, go let the air out or whatever they do with it. You're not going to stop this. But still, get it out of our community. We do not want it. It's just like Richland don't want their solar farms neither. We don't want them neither. All they're doing is coming in, wrecking the farmland, experimenting. There are people out there with asthma and everything else, but you guys are not thinking about that. You're not thinking about the elderly. You're not thinking about nobody but yourself just lining your pockets from the community. And don't even tell us their taxes ain't going to go up when that gets put in there. I guarantee you guys are the ones going to be paying for this out your butts if you live in Comstock Township. They don't care. All they want is that money lined in their pockets. And they're little investors that they got in this. And I know of two of them. So don't let them snowball you guys. They got investors in this and everything. I don't know who was all involved, but there's a lot. And I will keep on doing my research on this for you guys. I'm just a citizen, yes, but we do not want this anywhere in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll close citizen comment. And move on to, do we have any new business, Kyle?
No, Mr. Chair.
Old business. At this point, we're going to move into the best ordinance workshop.
So if the commission is acceptable with it, I have asked representatives from the industry, CIP, to remain for a little bit longer as we work through this. I'd request that, you know, we have talked significantly the past few months on the ordinance itself, just to kind of go not so much line by line, but section by section, ask if there's any clarifying questions we need to address, anything that stands out that needs to be further reviewed or clarified. And then as doing such, if we have questions for industry experts, to ask them if the chair is willing. But at this time, I would like to, so we can prepare ourselves for the public hearing on the 30th, just to line by line almost go through this and indicate, are we good with it? Are we not good with it? Do we need to have further comments on it? And then again, ask, you know, clarifying if we need to.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Have Mr. Thaw respond. So, certain people weren't here and maybe you should touch again on tweaking can be done without the public hearing.
Yeah, so we talked about potential tweaks to the ordinance. It is set for public hearing on the 30th, which the notice is probably published already. The public would have access to our proposed provisions. The board is not stuck with those, you know, it's not just yes or no with regard to that. We have to have a public hearing on what we've proposed, but you can make tweaks, you can make revisions to it within the context of what we're looking at. You can't make substantive changes without re-noticing a hearing, but you can make minor adjustments. Typically, you know, you're going to hold your public hearing, consider the comments made, and maybe there's a tweak or two that you might want to make before you make a recommendation, but you can take those into consideration, you know, tweak things within the context of what we're looking at and then make a recommendation to the board. Now, we did talk about maybe a more major revision that would not be what I would consider a non-substantive tweak, which is where you might locate a floating zone or how you might deal with the alternate site that was proposed that seemed to be a site that was agreeable to try to look at, at least in making a recommendation that would function, you know, we could revise our ordinance to cover a site like that. And again, you have to be careful when you do that because it's not just for one project. You know, if you make some kind of floating zone, well, maybe it fits other areas. You don't want to be careless in how you do it because then maybe it opens up areas where you wouldn't want it to go in the township. But you did craft your sensitive area type of provisions, so you do have some good protections. No matter where it might be able to go, it can't go within these distances of a sensitive area. So you've done a good job with that. But, you know, as we look at provisions to make, you know, what we talked about, I think, are more substantive. So it's fine to move forward the hearing on the ordinance before us. I think kind of the consensus was, you know, as we move forward, we'll have a public hearing on it, but you probably would remove the overlay that you have identified for south of 94 in those, on those ag properties and come up with a different type of overlay, whether it's specific, parcel specific. You can do a parcel specific overlay. You could say parcel number, whatever is the overlay zone if you wanted to. I mean, you could get very specific into what it is, but then you'd have to put in, you know, in that case then you could say subject to all other requirements of our ordinance. And then it's that parcel, subject to the requirements of our ordinance. If you had a larger floating zone, you'd have to, I think, build in more criteria for what qualifies for that zone. You know, if you didn't identify a specific parcel, then you're identifying, you know, does it have to be a certain number of acres? Does it have to be a certain distance from X, Y, or Z?
That's what I was going to ask you. I mean, could it be tailored like, you know, R1C over 50 acres? There's probably only one parcel.
It could be, yeah, yeah. You could have something like that. Thank you.
Kyle? So with that, any questions on Section 1, Article 4, the site design conditions? We have definitions on here. We added sensitive land uses within that regard as well, and that was based on the feedback to help mitigate any potential concerns for those uses that would be challenging to seek relocation in a short time period.
Are we okay with that, those changes? Do we need to vote on it or are we good with it?
No, let's... I think you said it for, it's been set for public hearing. So, I mean, this is kind of general comments, things to think about really for when you have the public hearing, if there's tweaks that you're thinking about making, but really the text is set. That's what people are looking at right now and planning on going to a hearing in two weeks.
Okay.
One tweak I think maybe we should consider is their proposed language about cost recovery. Do we want to consider that? I mean, we don't have to, but do you think there's value in considering that?
Yes, so I looked at that. I mean, we could look at that in terms of we're going to have an emergency operations plan. That can be, we can expect to see that in an operations plan, that they're going to comply with our ordinances. We already have a hazardous response ordinance. We already have a fire call ordinance. You know, so we do have some general ordinances in place. Their plan would have to comply with those. We could require it now if it's better to have specific language. I mean, that's always, if that's really what specific thing we want, then, you know, if it's in the text, then they have to do that.
Is that more of a duplication though?
To some degree, because I think that they're going to come to us with those standards in their plan is what we would have. I don't know that we necessarily have to put it in.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good.
Kyle? So then the next section we had on here too is the off-site battery storage systems and where they're located, small scale. And we did remove the ARG district and put in LM light manufacturing and M manufacturing. And then similar for large off-site LM and M district. Based on everything we've heard outside of the floating district, do we need to consider not for the next two weeks because of the public hearing, but is there any further consideration from the commission of any other districts? And I'm not trying to rehash anything, not trying to open anything up. I just want to make sure I give everyone their fair share of after all that you've been through the past nine months, that we're happy with it.
Anybody have comment?
And then on the light manufacturing, manufacturing zones, we modified from 500 feet, which was in the previous ordinance, and dropped it back down to 300, which is in line with the state standards. There seemed to be general consensus on that. This, we moved into the overlay district, but again, if we're seeking of removing the mapped overlay as presented after the public hearing, I would say we take no action on this tonight anyway.
Should we strike it tonight?
Again, that's going to be...
No.
Yeah, so again, I think we're thinking about things. I think it's something to flag and think about for, you're going to hear public comment, you're going to have your public hearing, and then you close the public hearing, and then you talk about tweaks or other things that you might want to make. Think about that as something that we may want to strike out after the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Kyle?
And then otherwise, we want to keep the 2,000 feet from sensitive land uses. Correct in that we have a map of and we showed where those were outside of the new STEM Academy, but that was mapped out on the southern portion of the township. Mr. Chair, I know we have experts as well from the industry. Would you like to entertain, allow them to? I would like to hear some of their comments too.
Okay. Yeah.
Excuse me for jumping in, just a quick clarification on the 20-foot setback. Is that from property line or from built? Is that specified somewhere? Yeah, the number six, there's a clear table for the other ones. I did not see for the 2,000.
Just a setback, 2,000 feet. It's in the safe room property line or structure.
And, I mean, if, I mean, to me, it copies the occupied space, but I don't, that's just something that we would like to clarify because that goes then into engineering and design considerations.
So then, Mr. Chair, I'd ask the commission then how you would do, again, we'll flag this for, you know, discussion after the public hearing, but is there any overview initially on this that we should review for?
I think we said it, property line.
Property line would be easiest. I think that's most appropriate.
But, yeah.
I'm not opposed to that. I'm just...
Mr. Chair, all the rest of our property, or all the rest of our setbacks though are from occupied buildings. So I do think it's a conflict of, like, okay, we're thinking about it one way here and another way there.
Thank you. So what, I would ask the commission's kind of just general direction of how you would like to go with that. Do you want to keep it as occupied building to keep it consistent across the entire ordinance? Or do you want to?
I do. Amber? Correct?
Yeah, I think occupied building.
Chelsea?
Yes.
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 Sandy?
And yes.
Okay. And I would thank Yon for that clarification too. Height, we have, you know, 15 feet. We haven't modified anything in recent reviews of that. Fencing, sound, lighting, these are all standards that we've carried over for some time. We did add some provisions in for landscaping standards of Article 5. And this says, you know, planning commission may require reasonable measures to minimize visual impacts by preserving existing natural vegetation, requiring new vegetative screening or other appropriate measures. Planning commission shall determine such visual screening measures as may be required, if any, on a site-specific basis pursuant to the standards for special land use approval as specified and so forth. Just as a clarifying point to the commission, you know, planning commission shall determine, that means you will, it's not a, you know, option, you shall determine that. Want to point that, the nuances of the word choice in here and ask Attorney Thaw for any, you know, additional comments if he feels warranted, but, okay. We talked about access drives, let's see, pavement, asphalt, concrete, surface runoff, installation and operational safety. Again, most of this is not changed in some time. We've kept over. We did discuss this recently. The decommissioning agreement shall be executed and recorded within seven business days of special land use approval, and a copy shall be provided to the township within 14 days of use approval. So that was a stipulation that we were working with Attorney Kaufman on to ensure that the township was receiving their decommissioning. So, questions or concerns on that from the commission?
Anybody? I think not.
The only, I do have something and I can't recall if it's here.
Are you on D, Kyle?
Yeah.
B, B, okay. That's where I thought you were, but I wanted to say something about D when you get there.
Agreed, that's what...
Yeah, that's what I think you were looking for, Amber, was D.
Okay. So then D, we were discussing when that would be appropriate to collect the financial assurance. And this was from Attorney Kaufman, sharing her exposure and experience with other communities and trying to access funding for decommissioning, so.
Kyle?
Yeah, well, that's up to you, Mr. Chair. I mean, again, I would like to invite them up, but I don't, it's not...
Okay, yes.
Please turn the speaker on.
A technical comment. So Attorney Kaufman said I, I agree with it. If you scroll back to B, it says that decommissioning agreement shall be executed and recorded within seven days, should be provided to township within 14 days of special land use approval. I want to caution the committee here, board, that we won't have the final decommissioning plan. We will have a draft. We can certainly, I would not recommend recording it, that we can provide, but it won't be finalized until we have selected, first of all, until we finalize design and until we selected the final technology, et cetera, because the cost will differ. And so we need some flexibility there to provide a final plan somewhere, somewhere later. So if I can recommend, we'll have all of that done when the building permits are, you know, are issued. So you can get it, you can get it seven to 14 days.
And typically, because if you read this, I mean, it would arguably require the bond... The bond is not typically issued until when you apply to get a building permit. It would be unusual to have a bond issued at this early stage, right after a special land use permits granted when there's no construction and, you know, nothing on the site. I mean, the main purpose of the bond is to ensure that the decommission will occur and they can't put shovels in the ground until they get building permits. So it makes sense to have those issued contemporaneous or as part of the building permit application process. At least that's what's typical around the state from what I've seen.
I'll let Attorney Thaw speak a bit more, but our concern with waiting until building permits were issued is the determination if building permits were required or not. So that's why this was placed in there to help incentivize getting that decommissioning bond.
Yeah, there have been arguments by some developers that they don't need to pull building permits.
Yeah, so I don't believe that the Still Dorosid Act would apply to this type of a project. I mean, that argument's typically advanced by consumers and the electric companies. But maybe you could even put a caveat in there that to the extent building permits are not required, it would be required after special use approval. I mean, that would be acceptable. I just think something so that we, they're not having to put up a million, $2 million bond, you know, a year before construction starts, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just on a side...
Go ahead.
And ask their legal counsel to, once we're all said and done, when he has a moment, maybe this week, to email our team some of those findings and recommendations so I can make sure we can capture, capture that. Thank you. And then I believe Treasurer Bloomfield and Commissioner Lawrence had questions on D.
Sandy?
Yeah. It says the township must be notified in writing at least 60 days before bond or other financial surety is set to expire. Failure to provide proper notification, update bond information is a violation of this ordinance. I know when we had Attorney Kaufman, I had asked her if she would take the responsibility for the bond, and she kind of joked and said absolutely not. So talking about this, I would like to see if we could somewhere in there put where we are not putting them, CIP, but the township where it goes to one elected official at the township and one hired one to be notified. So because with the change of elections every four years and with people retiring, new hires coming in, I just think that there needs to be something in writing from on our end there to protect the township to make sure that we have people that are appointed to make sure this is followed up with every year.
And would you just recommend by title, right?
Right.
So that regardless of those changes, whoever assumes said title would be responsible?
And like, we kind of knocked around like the superintendent, supervisor, chair of the planning commission. I mean, you can add two, three names, but that was just something I felt like we probably needed to put in there. So I just...
That makes good sense.
Just threw that out there for discussion and hopefully we can solve that.
Yes.
You're meeting manager, I don't want to...
Yeah.
So just one clarification, and I don't know where this language is coming from, but kind of midway through that paragraph, it says salvage value shall not be included in the estimated cost of decommissioning. Has that been specifically requested? Typically, what we see in decommissioning plans and, you know, the calculation basis for bonds is effectively the decommissioning value minus the salvage. So the cost minus what we can recover and we pay, we pay the bond base based on difference.
So working with, on other communities on the standard or the concern has been that even if there is a removal of salvage value, a lot of the townships in Michigan don't have the capacity or the ability to salvage the material. It applies a lot to solar equipment as well, panels, metal.
I see, okay. Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, this is more, yeah. So I just put that, putting that on your radar. I mean, obviously, I mean, this is even a bigger ticket item for solar, so.
Yeah. We specifically put it in that way because of issues that we've had with including salvage value in terms of maybe it promotes just walking away from a facility and letting the community clean it up, you know, and they're not in the business of salvaging stuff.
Just for, just for my benefit, so is that the function of capacity of the scrape yards to take, take material back or what specifically?
So we would ask for an engineering review of what it would cost to remove the equipment from the site. Some are, and I don't know if we have it spelled out in here, but they go down four feet into the ground, remove all built infrastructure and return the land to the previous state. I mean, granted, we know that you can't return farmland, especially back to production, but it would be to remove all that and then provide a cost every so many years of what it would take to return the site to its natural state. So this case, it's typically will come from an engineering firm to let us know what that would take financially to do that. And if we, as a community or in general, feel that it's not enough, that's where then a third party might be sought after to determine the decommissioning amount.
Yeah, I was more asking about the salvage. Like, why is that not considered because of issues with capacity? Take it, take it on locally and therefore the revenue not staying in the community or?
The issue really stems from the community not being in the business of salvaging things. So if you just walked away from a project and we have to collect on the bond and it's minus salvage value, it's on us to salvage the property.
So you, you take it, you take it as a responsibility on your behalf, not as a condition precedent of us being able to basically release the bond, right?
Right.
Like, that's...
It's because a lot of times with bonds, they have no falling back on the community who holds the bond. And, and...
But we post, we post the money, right? So it's in escrow effectively.
Right, but if it's minus the salvage value, that means then we have to go out and salvage. It doesn't cover the full cost. We have to salvage the property if we're collecting on the bond because you've gone bankrupt, walked away, whatever it is. We collect on the bond, we're responsible then for salvaging the property.
The incremental cost is not reflected in the bond effectively that you're saying.
And work, right? Because salvaging it is going to require us to send out people, break things apart, haul it out. So you're getting value for the material, which is what would be subtracted from this, but there's a cost to even, even getting that value that the community just doesn't want.
It's not...
Yeah, but that's reflect, that's typically reflecting the cost. I, but I understand the underlying, so thank you, thank you for the clarification. I, but I understand the underlying, so thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Kyle? Proceed.
Yep, so there's, there's that, we'll make those changes. I appreciate that feedback. We, you know, modified the other sections. This was based on the previous zoning ordinance prior to clear zoning, those section numbers. A lot of the other items have not changed in here. Again, this comes down to an executed community host agreement and the amount of 2,500, 2,500 per megawatt of nameplate capacity, 50% to be paid within seven business days of special land use approval. We have gone back and forth over the months on this. And then the remainder, 50% to be paid at the commencement of operations of the system. I believe that the commission and the committee had the justification that this helps incentivize the developer to actually put up the money and see the project through by putting up that 50% of the community host agreement at the onset. Questions on the seven business days? Other than that, modifications that increase facilities footprint, we talked about this a little bit. Any increase in energy capacity requires written notification to the township zoning administrator and/or designated personnel at least 30 days prior to the increase in energy capacity. All obligations included but not limited to the community host agreement and decommission agreement must be updated to reflect the increase in energy capacity. Financial surety shall be increased if there is an increase in energy capacity. This again was in terms of learning of potential phased projects coming forward, that we wanted to be notified of any increase in that of 10% capacity.
That was another one, Kyle.
Yeah.
Where we felt like we should designate someone along with the zoning administrator. We felt like we should list probably two more people there because that was so important.
Hang on, yeah. So, Sandy, you would like, besides township zoning administrator and/or designated personnel, to actually also list a confirmed designated person?
Yeah, like two more. Like, so we have the chair of the planning commission and then another elected official. So, we have, again, an appointed official or someone hired and then also the zoning administrator. Because you just, like I said, you just never know when help changes or elections. So, I just wanted to make sure we were covered for that bond. And we had enough people with their eyes on it. Thank you.
Jan, you have some?
A question, clarification. If you scroll up toward the community host agreement, so no problem paying the underlying amount of 50% of it. Potentially, though, I'd like to see the mechanism behind it. It does not say anything about, you know, it being potentially refundable, refundable if the project does not continue forward. I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to put in sort of, you know, an escrow construct or, I don't know, maybe Steve, you have, you have a better idea? And then, you know, who bears the cost and, and so forth, because then it's fully released to the township, you know, at operation, I would say.
Yeah, I would just point out that Act 233 requires that payment to be made upon commencement of the, of the commercial operation of the project. Again, you know, all of this is built upon the concept that the project gets built and is financially feasible and is making money. To make these payments in advance before the project's even built really isn't standard industry practice. You know, if we're not going to be able to build the project, obviously, you know, none of this would come to fruition eventually. So, I, I just think it's reasonable to have the, I mean, these are obviously significant incentives, but it's reasonable to have these incentives paid when the project is built and operational and can make the money to pay them, which I think is consistent with both the state act and the way that it's handled in most jurisdictions throughout Michigan.
Al, you got anything to say about?
I think that's just, you've heard from them, it's a policy decision, you know, so you could take that into consideration. They're thought, they're correct about it being standard in the state law and in a lot of, in most agreements where the money's not going to come in until, you know, before they begin operation or when they start operation. But it's, it's, you heard their reasoning why they'd like it. Otherwise, it's just kind of up to you if that's something you want to entertain.
Is it, is it more palatable if, if it was done like an escrow account where the money is simply a surety rather than a cash payment? That would sort of provide some of the protection that was intended here, but wouldn't put the onus on them? Would that be a compromise?
Yeah, I mean, it could be. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we're trying to work, make a workable ordinance, you know, versus going to the state. If they went to the state, they wouldn't have to pay it until commencement.
Right, and, and this is not going to make, make or break, obviously, the state versus local process, but if, if there is a way to make this letter of credit, just an assurance that you guys will get the money, hold it in escrow, not draw on it until the project actually goes into operation, and in case it does not happen, it's, it's just withdrawn, right? And then we, again, something to think about is the cost of the escrow, how that's, how that's being accounted for. We pay for the letter of credit. You know, that's just something that, you know, something to consider. It's, it's, it's going to be probably the minimum, depending on how long it takes from the deposit to, to. Yeah. But I, I would, I would introduce two things. So, flexibility on, on the form. Not everybody is able to, you know, since we're doing this for, you know, other, other developers, not everybody's able to post a letter of credit, so cash and, and letter of credit. So, the form in which you post and then what happens if the project is, is not moving forward. And it's, you know, I'm, I'm only offering this because I, you know, it's some skin in the game, right? First of all, I'm happy to entertain that, but also it's, it's a, it's, it's a mechanism that's, that's not standard for, you know, for, for payments to, to the township as, as or counties, local administrations, as Steve correctly pointed out. At the same time, we do put money in, in escrow for, for other things that are, you know, before the projects are built. So, again, if there's anything I, I'm not going to die on this hill, but I'm going to die on, on the hill of being able to claw it back, right? So.
Are we in favor of escrowing it or changing that?
I'm amenable to changing it. I, I, I'm not sure how we should change it.
So, what I would just say with these kind of things, just think about it.
Okay.
For discussion.
And move ahead.
When, after the public hearing. I wouldn't be uncomfortable kind of making the decisions now.
Question mark on.
Yeah.
Kyle, any further questions on the, outside of Sandy's comment on designating a township representative beyond the zoning administrator, the elected chair, so forth? Further questions, comments on that one? From there, we get to everything else. We did strike building permit because of the, I believe, concerns or potential for how that is to be handled. Made a note to Article 3, Section 1, under coverage. And then this one has been amended. I don't, Attorney Thaw and I have confirmed that in our current version, this has been modified. I know it's been.
Yeah, I provided a copy with it struck. It just must not have got circulated.
Okay.
And I believe that is the extent, that is the extent. Questions from the, Mr. Chair, from the commission?
Anybody have questions for Kyle or for any on this?
Amber?
No, I think, aside from a couple of the things that we discussed tonight, like, I think it's in good shape. And then the next step is just what we'll have to do after the fact with, with that overlay.
Oh. Greg?
I'm good.
Chelsea?
I'm ready to move ahead.
James?
I'm ready to move forward.
Sandy?
I'm good, thank you.
Chair, the only item I would ask if your commission's okay with it entertaining, again, because CIP and their representatives did travel for us and meet with us, if they have any last minute comments, I don't want to make it a wasted trip for them at this time either. So, if you would be willing to entertain any last minute comments from them?
Yes, I will.
You certainly did not waste our time. I just want to, on behalf of the group that's here and that has been coming here for, for quite some time, express a gratitude for, just like the constituents here, the residents said that you guys are doing what you're doing for the, for the township. We respect that and we're looking forward to be working with you onward and let us know how, how we can support your decision-making before the ordinance is, is passed and also beyond that. If there are questions, clarifications that need to be provided to the material that was shared today, obviously, this was a public meeting, so we'll, we'll share the information that, that we put, put down and presented here with, with the staff. And looking forward again to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just remind the commission and those in the audience and anyone watching in our group here that because it is a public hearing, we do accept written comments. So, in the next few weeks, if they have any they'd like to submit on this or further elaboration of any of their observations, we are happy to take those in up until the meeting on the 30th. So, we do welcome any and all comments on that. I'm happy to read them on the 30th as a reminder of what we discussed tonight. So, I did want to offer that to the group as well, that they can still submit written comments based on the draft ordinance.
Thank you.
We don't vote on this tonight, do we? It just goes informational.
Yeah.
Yep, so then, Mr. Chair, the next step will be the public hearing on this version of the ordinance on the 30th. After that, as we discussed during the joint meeting, you can further digest any comments that have been received from the public, digest anything regarding the overlay. As Attorney Thaw indicated, if there's anything substantial, we'll probably want to read notice it for another public hearing and to highlight the changes. But after this, I do anticipate you, on the 30th, after the public hearing portion itself, doing a discussion item on this to determine what you may want to modify.
Given what you know, do you think we'll need another public hearing, given what we're probably going to do?
I believe you will, but I have some good ideas already kind of going around in my brain about what kind of overlay you can put with right criteria to make sure you're best protected. The things they tell you are things that they're going to do. And so, you know, but it would require another public hearing, which would then, you know, you'd have to put 15 days' notice out. Then it goes to the township, you know, you have your public hearing, you make your recommendation to the board, it goes to the township board. They have to accept it for first reading, so it's two meetings for them if they don't want to make any changes to it. If they want to make some changes, the township board's able to make changes also, as long as they're non-substantive. If they want to make substantive changes, they have to send it back to the planning commission for public hearing. But they can make non-substantive type of changes or tweaks within the bounds of what we were discussing at the public hearings. And so, that's, you know, two meetings that they have to move on to.
What do you, what do you mean by substantive changes?
Well, within, so, within the context, so if they're going to make a change to it, so it can go to the township board level if they want to make a change in it and it is beyond what we discussed at public hearing or what the public would have been aware of under discussion, then you got to send it back and make that change. But otherwise, they can make changes to it. They have the authority to, they have final say over it. But, you know.
If it, if it said 200 feet and they wanted 300 feet, they could do that.
They can do that, yes. But if it said overlay zone south of 94 and they want to do overlays somewhere else, that would be a substantive change that would have to have more public hearing.
Especially if it involved different property owners or different regions, right?
So, then, Mr. Chair, looking at your calendar, October 30th is the public hearing based on the, again, 90% of the ordinance says is. Your next meeting, I believe, is November 13th. If the commission is acceptable tonight on it, we could go ahead tomorrow or Monday, work with Clerk Bochamp and get a public hearing schedule notice out for November 13th, working with Attorney Thaw as well to just get ahead of that 15 days. So, if you are comfortable with that?
I think, yeah, I think that's good.
Okay. So, and then we'll work with Attorney Thaw and Clerk Bochamp in getting that notice for the 13th as well.
Thank you. The next item on, on this agenda is a closed session, but all the members said that they didn't want a closed session. So, what do we do?
So, Mr. Chair, can I hand out the memos? So, as directed, we separated out the memos.
They're leaving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So, no, I, so we separate out the memos basically to three different memos.
Okay.
You know, and as you indicated at the last board meeting, it seemed like everybody wanted to just discuss them in open session. Let me hand them out to everybody. Let me just take one copy for myself and then you can just pass them around. So, here is, there's that. And so, I think you were provided with the memos previously, or no?
Yeah.
So, you've all seen them, basically Attorney Kaufman separated them out for me into three different memos. She felt like one, two of them could have been joined together into one? Okay. Yeah, it's fine.
Jimmy and I will share.
All right, all right.
We're good, we're good.
So, what I'd like to do, so we could go into closed session to discuss them if we want to go one by one. We could go one by one and then you could vote whether you want to wait, because you either are going to have to vote to go into closed session or vote to waive privilege. You could, if you chose to, you could vote to waive privilege on it and then we can just discuss it in open session. Or we can entertain motions to go into closed session on each one. It's, I think in our last meeting, there was an expression that nobody cared if we talked about it in open session. Is that correct?
So, do we want to vote on whether we? Proceed without going to closed session or?
Okay. Okay. Do you have a copy of everything, three? Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll keep these.
So, if we, I think that there were indications at the last meeting. Has anybody changed their mind with regard to those indications of wanting to go into closed session?
Sandy?
No, I'm, I'm good staying in.
Jim?
Only thing I have question of, do we give up our attorney privilege, privilege at all or what?
Yes, so if you, we either, we can vote to go into closed session on the opinion if we do, and if the board votes to go into closed session, we'll go into closed session on that. But if we do, if, but if we don't go into closed session, then the board has to vote to waive the attorney-client privilege because we're just going to talk about it.
The board has to vote, you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then my question is, to vote on where we go in closed session, how does the vote have to be? If there's all yea or one nay or we don't, how's that got to be?
No, it's two-thirds, though, of the board to go into closed session.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Right, so Sandy said she did not want to go on, on one of the opinions.
Bob?
Bob?
I don't want to go in closed session.
Okay, so what I would ask the board to do then is make a motion to waive attorney-client privilege on these three opinions and we'll just talk about them.
Okay.
I move we waive client privilege and discuss these legal opinions.
Support.
Oh, James, would you do a roll call for us?
Sure, let me get my, because I knew it was coming tonight. I never got my paperwork to do this, so.
And, and a yes is not to go into closed session?
Yes, I wanted to clarify.
So the motion is to waive attorney-client privilege and discuss these opinions in open session.
Thank you.
So a yes is that motion?
Yes, is to waive the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Sandy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven yes there and zero nos.
All right. All right, so let me start by, I'll just take the first one onto my pile here and it's regarding Sandy Bloomfield.
Of course it is.
And so basically, each of the opinions goes through the same analysis of what is misfeasance, malfeasance, nonfeasance, and what the allegation is and whether it violates it. And then ultimately, you know, what is a township board's duty in these regards and whether, you know, what needs to be done or anything to be done regarding it. And what I would say just kind of preliminarily and in regards to all of them, I always like to, there should always be some leeway given so that everybody understands what the rules are, understands the bylaws. You know, this is, these are legal concepts. In a lot of cases, we need to read our bylaws. It talks about conflict of interest. We have law, you know, statutes to discuss it. And not everybody, you know, knows these rules upfront. And so I always like to be a little liberal about it and it, but once you know the rules, you know, you really got to try to follow them. You know, you have to have some leeway because you come in here as layman, you don't know all these rules. But, you know, once they're explained to you, the expectation is, yeah, we know what the rules are now, we're going to follow these rules. All right, that's just kind of a preface to the whole thing in my mind.
There's one other factor. We worked on our bylaws for three months beginning of our term this year.
Well, a lot of times people don't think about these things though. They just, like, you know, so the first thing, you know, with Commissioner Bloomfield, you know, it's failing to vote on a matter. And, okay, the rule is, we all vote on matters. Everything that comes before us, we have to vote unless there's a conflict, a direct conflict, or if there's not a direct conflict under our bylaws, if there's a reasonable appearance of a conflict, then a majority vote of the boards required to excuse that person from voting. That's under our bylaws, okay? So, you know, we have our bylaws, there's a state statute that's referenced in here, you know, that the legislative body may remove a member of the planning commission for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance in office on written charges after a public hearing. So it's a pretty serious thing to go through that process. It's not a process that's taken lightly. Before casting a vote, a member on which, on a matter which a member may reasonably be considered to have a conflict of interest, the member shall disclose the potential conflict of interest to the planning commission. The member is disqualified from voting on the matter if so provided by the bylaws, which we have bylaws that address conflict of interest, or by a majority of the member, remaining members of the planning commission, which we also have provision for that in our bylaws. Failure of a member to disclose a potential conflict of interest as required by the subsection constitutes malfeasance in office. Unless the legislative body by ordinance defines conflict of interest for purposes of the subsection, the planning commission shall do so in its bylaws, which we've done. We've satisfied that part of it. Therefore, and this is from Attorney Kaufman, therefore, a PC member has a duty to vote on all matters before the PC unless he or she has a conflict of interest. So just always think of that. You always got to vote on the issue. And we've got maybe a big issue coming up, you got to vote on it unless, you know, there's a conflict of interest. So we have misfeasance, malfeasance, and nonfeasance by the planning commission. Attorney Kaufman goes through those standards. Misfeasance refers to the performance of a lawful act in a wrongful manner. Nonfeasance is the failure to perform a duty required by office. And malfeasance involves committing a wrongful act, which normally involves intent to do that. Under Michigan law, specific statutory provisions also address these forms of misconduct. For instance, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act explicitly states that failure to disclose a conflict by a planning commissioner is malfeasance in office. Additionally, the legislative body, as we indicated, can remove you for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance upon written charges, public hearing. Further, there's common law principles that emphasize, you know, the intent, you know, when you're engaging in these functions, it's not really intended if there's a mistake or something. It's kind of a big deal to try to remove a commissioner. This means that the misconduct must be tied to duties of the office and performed with a sense of depravity, perversion, or taint is kind of what case law would say. So, you know, we have these standards, we have penalties for violating these standards. In Commissioner Bloomfield's case, it's, she failed to vote on our recommendation on the zoning ordinance amendment to decrease the minimum lot size and other changes to the R1-C zoning district. So she should have voted on that matter, we know that now, we're aware of that. But her failure to do so at most would be determined to be nonfeasance in office, you know, failure to carry forward your duty to vote. You know, so that's, again, I don't see these as major issues. I don't see that as a major issue. It's not something that I would ever recommend a board to move forward and try to remove a commissioner on that basis. It is a violation, technical.
Thank you.
Yes, and we know now that we have to vote. And so, you know, I would expect that there's compliance, you know, moving forward in the future. And that's just my thought on that one. I don't know if, if we want to talk about each one or, you know, that's kind of up to the.
Any, any discussion?
Joseph?
No discussion.
Okay.
No, I, this has been an educational experience for me because I did not realize, and I've been on boards and commissions prior to this, did not really realize that you were required to vote on every vote. So I will do so diligently in the future and I think we all will.
Right.
Any other comments? Sandy?
Yeah, I do. This was, there was no intent there to purposely not vote. If any of you have watched the minutes of that meeting, which this was pretty vindictive when this charge came forward, I was sitting there writing down what was happening and I think the vote just moved a little too fast for my brain that night because I know that I needed to vote. Why wouldn't I vote on something that had to be done for a public hearing, for this to move forward to the township board? So it was just, just moved too fast and there was no intent to purposely do it. So it was a good education. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so if we move on to the, the next opinion with regard to Mr., Commissioner Kreister. In that regard, it's the same standard, same things we're talking about. In this case, that he's not a named party in the Soil Friends, okay, so he failed to vote on the special land use permit application for Soil Friends is the allegation. He's not a named party in the Soil Friends litigation, therefore unless he has another conflict with Soil Friends, he should have voted on the special use permit extension. Again, a failure to vote on the matter could at most be determined to be nonfeasance in office. And again, it's just something to think about, understand, and make sure that we're doing that in the future.
Any comments? James?
Hi.
In James's defense, James did not hear you say nay. Are there any nays? Because it was so silent that James didn't, I didn't hear you. So James didn't hear you and then you just went right, it went right on through. So I think James was innocent, I mean guilty, but innocent in the way it happened.
Okay. Anyone else?
Since this all happened, Attorney Thaw, we had Attorney Kaufman always going over the motion so that we all understood it. So I would ask that you continue to bring that forward, what we were doing all the time, where she would restate the motion and say, if you're voting on it, this means no. If you say yes, this is what's happening.
And we also went to a roll call.
And then we went to a roll call for every vote we did. And I think that's helped us all to make sure that we're all being heard. So if you could do that for us, I think the board's in agreement with that. It would help us continue to stay on track.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to say, James?
I do. I do have to say, other planning commissioners basically said, but I'm going to say this, that since this happened and all that, that I have come and said to the attorney, please explain what a yes vote is, please explain what a no vote is, and please let us know which way, not which way, but what the yes and no means. There, in my, I did not, I did want to vote on this right here. As Sandy mentioned, sometimes things move a little bit fast. It got through and I did not end up voting on it. So there was no intent for me to do anything wrong on that. And since then, the bylaws have been out and they've been given to us. That's it.
And I think sometimes your mind's moving but your mouth doesn't.
Correct.
It happens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no other comments on that one, I'll move on to the next one, which is, again, same standards, same, same thoughts with regard to violations. And this is, there's a few here for Commissioner Sherwood. The first is failing to vote on special use permit application for Soil Friends. So at some point during 2025, Soil Friends submitted an application to the planning commission to extend its special use permit. It is noted here that Soil Friends has been in litigation with the township since 2023. Mr. Sherwood is a named defendant in that case. Accordingly, Mr. Sherwood should not have voted on the Soil Friends application for the SUP extension as he was a named defendant in the ongoing litigation at the time and still is today. Per planning commission bylaws, Mr. Sherwood should have announced that he had a conflict of interest and abstained from voting. His failure to do so and announce the conflict at most to be determined to be nonfeasance in office. The second, and I'll just go through them all and then we can just address it as we. Commissioner Sherwood's ex parte communications, potential conflict of interest. So the PC is now fully aware of the impact, and it's been explained, I think I even addressed some of this at prior meetings, the impact that ex parte communications with an applicant or about a pending application can have on a final PC decision. The planning commission's recent training sessions clearly discussed how such ex parte communications may violate procedural due process and may lead to a court reversing or invalidating a planning commission decision. As discussed previously, a planning commissioner must be a neutral decision maker and all planning commission decisions must be made in a public meeting. If a planning commissioner continues with ex parte communications that threaten a decision by the planning commission, the township board may consider removal of the planning commission member if written charges are brought in a public hearing held on the proposal to remove. Third, Commissioner Sherwood's participation comments on the BEST zoning ordinance regulations moratorium. Mr. Sherwood's comments on the zoning ordinance regulations for BEST projects are authorized by law but should be confined to public PC meetings. It is inappropriate for a PC member to comment on social media or other places about his or her opinion on a matter pending before the planning commission. And while the zoning ordinance BEST moratorium has been lengthy, it is still inappropriate for a planning commission member to publicly provide their personal opinions on existing ordinance, the proposed ordinance, or the moratorium outside of the public meeting. It's important that planning commissioners not appear to have predetermined an outcome. In this case, the planning commission is only a recommending body to the board. The PC does not have final decision-making authority. However, the planning commission needs to be aware that their actions may damage the planning commission's reputation and/or give rise to questions on neutrality of the planning commission. Planning commission members should not use their position to advance their personal interests. Number four, Commissioner Sherwood contacts with Tanaska representatives. To the best of, to my best knowledge, Mr. Sherwood has frequently publicly aligned himself with the BEST developers and the representatives, sitting with them at board meetings, speaking on behalf of the project and the proposed site, publicly criticizing the moratorium and otherwise appearing to favor the BEST project and the site at 7600 East Main. These activities, including but not limited to social media posts in favor of the BEST project, against the moratorium, and for the site at 76 East Main, give the appearance of impropriety and conflict of interest. These actions completely undercut the integrity of Commissioner Sherwood and the planning commission as a whole. Number five, Commissioner Sherwood's participation in review of BEST application by Tanaska. So this is different than considering the ordinance, this is an actual application before you. Given the above, if and when CIP submits an application for a BEST project anywhere in the township, it's my opinion that Mr. Sherwood is conflicted out and cannot participate in that decision. Michigan case law provides that if a planning commissioner fails to disclose a conflict of interest and votes on a matter, this constitutes malfeasance in office under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. The statute explicitly requires that before casting a vote on a matter where a conflict of interest may reasonably exist, the commissioner must disclose the potential conflict to the planning commission. I'm just going to add a little commentary on that issue that it's not just voting. So if you have a conflict of interest, I believe when the issue comes up before the planning commission, you need to state your conflict of interest and you're not allowed to participate in that discussion at all. It's not just voting, case law says you can't participate in the discussion. So I would say when those type of, when an applicant goes forward and you have a conflict, you don't wait till there's a vote on it and participate in the discussion. You immediately tell the board what your conflict is. If it's a direct conflict, then you're conflicted out, you're out of it. If it's something that there's a reasonable appearance of impropriety, then you would ask the board to excuse you, but then you would not participate in discussion. So I just put that out there as additional commentary. The stat, I think, okay, the statute explicitly requires that before casting a vote on a matter where the commissioner must disclose the potential conflict to the planning commission. If the bylaws or a majority vote of the remaining members disqualifies the commissioner from voting, they're prohibited from participating in the vote. Failure to disclose such a conflict is considered malfeasance and can lead to removal from office by the legislative body after written charges in a public hearing. I'll just keep on going with it. In the case of the Michigan Court of Appeals that cited there, Lakeview Vineyards versus Aronco Charter Township, the Michigan Court of Appeals highlighted the importance of impartiality in planning commission decisions. The court noted that a commissioner with a direct pecuniary interest in a matter, such as being a competitor of an applicant, must recuse themselves to avoid influencing the decision-making process. Although the commissioner in that case recused himself from voting, his prior involvement in discussions raised concerns about the impartiality of the planning commission's actions. This underscores the broader principle that failure to disclose and address conflicts of interest can undermine the validity of the decision and lead to legal challenges. That's the issue of just not even participating in it. You know, she talks about being provided extensive documents stating that Commissioner Sherwood has an interest in the property at 7600 East Main Street, hunting rights at least, that she's been given Facebook posts by Commissioner Sherwood criticizing the moratorium and stating that it costs the township $2 million. Citizens have told her about Mr. Uh, citizens have told her about Mr. Sherwood's appearing to, appearing at recent school board meeting and urging superintendent to support the BEST project at 7600 East Main. She indicates she doesn't know if these things are true, things that she's heard. Uh, however, she's seen Commissioner Sherwood sit at township board meetings with Tenaska representatives and CIP representatives. Uh, you know, and I'm not gonna go into the notation there because I've not, I addressed that already with the board at the last meeting. Uh, if any of the allegations are true, Commissioner Sherwood should clearly, Commissioner Sherwood clearly has a conflict of interest and should not participate in Planning Commission decisions on any CIP application. If Commissioner Sherwood's actions are based on personal interest in the property at 7600 East Main, it does not have to be a financial interest. And he fails to mention that interest, if he fails to mention that interest and abstain from participation regarding the application for that site, these actions could arise to the level of malfeasance in office. However, if Commissioner Sherwood does participate, moreover, if Commissioner Sherwood's, uh, does participate, his participation would make any PC decision legally vulnerable to challenge. And so that's her opinion in that regard.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion about the first part right up here with Bob Sherwood failing to vote on the SUP application here. Just reading through here and stuff like that, the attorney knew Bob was involved in the case and was there and attorney should have voiced and said that Bob Sherwood is involved in the case here. That's my opinion right there.
Yeah, so I'm just, yeah, let, let me just, you probably know more about this than me. But you know what, so Bob Sherwood failing to vote on the SUP application, does it, was it supposed to mean that he did vote on the SUP application?
No, he did not.
But he didn't disclose.
Right.
Why, okay, I understand that.
And that.
Yeah, I mean.
So he should have been abstained from voting and knew right up front about that.
Right. It probably should have been indicated, um.
Isn't it still up to the individual to?
It is always up to the individual to state their, I mean, the attorney is not, you know, they can't catch everything and they're not all-knowing. They might be aware of that. But it is always the individual's responsibility to declare their conflicts and either abstain at, or ask the board to abstain if it is not a clear violation of the first three things in your bylaws.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Number one, when we talked about that, I had planned on voting no. Attorney Kaufman said, we were court ordered to give them site plan and special use, which we did. That court order on the special use and site plan expired six months before we took this vote in here. The architect had pulled his seal. Everything was expired on that. It should have come back in front of the Planning Commission, the whole site plan and everything. I didn't say anything that night. Then Attorney Kaufman says, well, I'm in litigation. And I said, so am I. But she never commented, you should abstain yourself. She looked at Larry and said, Larry, didn't you get dropped from the lawsuit? And Larry said, yes. This is on April 10th. This is the date that Larry called to vote for this special use and everything. Larry was in litigation. How did he know on April 10th that he got dropped from the lawsuit? When their attorney signed it on April 10th, our attorney signed it on April 11th and the judge didn't rule on it till April 15th. So Larry was still in litigation when he called the vote and voted. Now, the other part of the whole thing where I had problem is, all the members on this board, Sandy and Ben, ran their elections together. They were too tight together. She should have abstained herself just because of their personal relationship. Greg, Amber, and Joe were appointed by Ben to this board. He put his application in for building permit after he was appointed. So everything I seen going on that night, and they had no discussion on special use land site. Everyone said, well, we just made, need to make this so he can run his business. And bam, bam, bam was the vote. And it went that fast. Jim didn't hear the nay. I barely heard the nay. I was gonna vote no. Catherine never told me that I couldn't vote. She told Larry he could vote and he's still in litigation. So everything about this I thought was an illegal vote. So I just didn't say anything. And that came, that judgment was right at the very end when he called my name. It wasn't that I was gonna not say anything or not vote. It's just that was my decision at that moment when he called my name. And that's all I gotta say about that. It was illegal in my book. Larry was in litigation still. And everybody else was appointed by the person they were talking about. And one of them ran her campaign with him. I think it was all wrong.
Well, I would just.
So how do you explain it?
Well, I would just say this, that the supervisor doesn't have, the supervisor basically nominates people for the Planning Commission. The Township Board as a whole appoints them, right? The board has to authorize that. If the board doesn't authorize it, then he can appoint whoever he wants, but they don't get on the Planning Commission. The board has to authorize it. So I, I, I think, you know, these things have to just move forward from where we're at today. Um, we all know, we all have a copy of our new bylaws or the bylaws that we have. Familiarize yourself with them. Really think about issues when they're coming forward. Do I have a conflict of interest? Do I not have a conflict of interest? You know, if you do, you have to indicate that. Now, we know in here, just because you're friends with somebody is not a conflict of interest. I mean, you, if you're in the community long enough, you know most everybody in the community.
That's good that you said that because I don't think that's clearly said enough.
Yeah, I mean, there, yeah. So that is an important thing to think about and realize. You know most of the people that come in front of you. Uh, you know, whether they're coming in for special land use or otherwise because you're members of the community. You're not gonna just be able to abstain because, oh, I know this person or I've known him since we were kids. Or those aren't legal reasons to abstain. Uh, we've put those reasons in our bylaws. We've said for the request of a Planning Commission member is to ask to make a decision involving his or her spouse, children, stepchildren, grandchildren, parents, brother, sister, grandparents, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, sons-in-law. So basically your family who are saying, hey, you can't vote on that. Arguably, there's, there's law out there that says you can, you can vote on things like that. There's Attorney General opinions that say, if I'm on the Township Board and I'm gonna hire, uh, there's a vote to say, hire my spouse, I can still vote on that. They've got, because you're each individual people. Now, most people are gonna say, hey, I shouldn't do that. But there is law that says that's not technically a conflict of interest. So we put our standards in here. We put all family members. We have to abide by our standards. We also say if you have a business interest or financial interest. Or we say if you own a property or have a financial interest in neighboring property. Or, you know, and that means within the 300-foot radius that we send out notices, you have to abstain. And then there's also just reasonable appearance of conflict of interest. You know, that, you know, maybe there's something about that property that, uh, you have some dealing with. It might not be that you're a neighbor of it and it might not be that, uh, uh, you have a financial interest. But you have enough of an interest in it that you need to abstain. But in that case, you have to ask, you have to tell the board what it is. And you have to ask to abstain in that circumstance. So I think we have really good rules in our conflict of interest provisions. We just need to keep them in mind and, and follow them. And yeah, if there's, if there's violations in the future, if there's repeated violations, those things, yeah, they can rise to the level where you wanna move things forward and ask for removal from a Planning Commission. But otherwise, you know, what we have here, I think you just move forward. Everybody, if you have questions about it, ask me, you know. But otherwise, I think everybody now understands how these rules should be applied. And there's then the expectation that we follow them.
Okay. Any other comment?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I agree. I think it's a learning experience for everybody and we all need to move forward. That said, I do have a question about the, all of the accused, for lack of a better word, right? Like in here, um, uh, conflict of interest with the BEST project. So in order to, for everyone to protect themselves, right? Bob, Bob included, like, because I don't believe that he wants to do something he's not supposed to do. So does he now need to abstain from, if an application came forward? Where does that stand so that we're all on the same page?
So that's a good question. So in terms of where Bob would have to stand on these things, he isn't allowed to vote on the ordinance revisions. You're allowed to participate in those discussions. You're allowed to vote on them. We're a recommending body. You recommend to the Township Board, they take the final action. Uh, now, in terms of an application that comes forward regarding CIP or, you know, what was Tenaska, in that regard, I would strongly suggest that you abstain from participation in those matters. That means not, uh, you're not part of any of that discussion on it. Um, and ultimately, that's gonna, that's the, the right decision and it protects the decision that's made because this body is the deciding body in that case. The applicant's entitled to due process. The public is entitled to having impartial decision makers. The applicant's entitled to having impartial decision makers. And you don't even want the appearance of that not being so because that leads to lawsuits. There've been many lawsuits where, uh, planning commissioners have spoken out about things that have come then before the Planning Commission for special land use. Say it was a junkyard and there was no way they were gonna let that thing in their township. And you know what? They denied it at the Planning Commission. And you know where you go? Straight to court because they're gonna take you to court and they're gonna have a good argument with the judge. So we don't wanna put ourselves in those positions. If it comes to an application from CIP and Tenaska, Bob should abstain from participation in that.
For what it's worth, just a second. For what it's worth, I mean, that was what brought all of this forward is there was a lot of citizen comments and concerns. And so my goal is for us to be able to move forward and move past it. And so I think like airing it out, knowing what we need to do, hopefully we can just move forward ethically and it's a done deal.
And not to throw mud, but Amber wrote Ben Martin a letter about the BEST system before she was even appointed to the board in denial of it and against it. Remember the letter?
Yeah, I did. It had questions about it. I think what I said is my question would be, what is the benefit to the community and what's the risk if we get it or don't get it?
But you were against it.
As a citizen, because I'm a, I'm a citizen who was solicited by, just as an option of sending out letters. And I, I sent a letter into my supervisor, my elected official, how I felt about it.
Yeah, so the big thing is to consider that you're different now when you're sitting at the Planning Commission.
That was prior to being on.
Like there's the things that you can do and you can say, I've got a First Amendment right, a free speech, and I can say what I want. And that's all true. But when you sit up here as a planning commissioner, some of those rights go away. You know, on things that are gonna come before you. People are entitled to due process and we get into big lawsuits over those issues when it's not followed. And so we really wanna protect against those types of things that keep happening and making sure when we make a decision on something, it's sound and, you know, hopefully as bulletproof as possible.
And I would like to comment on a couple of things on that. Number one, no one ever saw me sitting with CIP out in the audience because I've never sat with CIP in the audience.
We're, we're moving forward though. This is a mute.
I know.
It's a mute point right now. You don't need to talk about it.
No, Greg, I got 15 charges against me right here.
Yeah, and we're ready to just.
I know, but I want.
Ready to get.
I just wanna say, some of these are false truths. And I have a obligation to state my fact on what the false truth was. At the school board meeting, I sat all the way in the back of the school board. I never said a word when Dr. Tanis talked everything about the battery storage and not coming there and they didn't want it. Never once did I say, yeah, I wanted, I tried to change his mind because I didn't talk to him. Ben was sitting over here to the right of me. Sandy was there for a little while. Nate Dorlag was there for a little while. They left. I never talked to Tanis until he left and he goes, sorry, Bob, I know that you were for this, but this is what they voted. And I said, okay, Jeff, thank you. And that was that. Now, did I sit with Terry from Tenaska out in the audience from time to time? Tenaska never had an application in for special use or site plan. And I know the rules. If there's a, once there's an application, that has to come in front of the board to the zoning administrator and be filtered down that way. So was I doing anything wrong? I didn't feel I was. If I was, I was. Yes, I hunt the property. I've plowed it for 20 years for the Strong's when they were 90 years old. I took care of it. I actually do hunt there and I keep trespassers and stuff off from there. And part of one of them trespassers sent a letter to Supervisor Martin, whose name is David Hatfield. And I'm gonna foil the letter because it went on to Catherine. And that's when all this ex parte communication came out. I told him, you can't hunt here. You've been told before you can't hunt here. Now you need to go. He's threatening me. He's waving his gun in my face. He says, you're probably recording all this, aren't you? And I said, no, I'm not. I'm not that way. But you can't be here. You're trespassing. So he got mad. Of course, he hit my truck with his gun. I said, you hit my truck with your gun again. You're not gonna have to drag me out of my truck because I'm gonna come out of it myself. So we had our confrontation. He left. He went across the property and the last words he said to me, will you wait till Ben Martin? Wait till you see what Ben Martin does to you. And I've got the paper and the date when he sent the letter to Catherine or to Ben Martin and Ben forwarded it to Catherine. And that's when all this ex parte communication stuff came out. Two days later, he was there. I just called Roger Glidden, who was, his wife was the one who owned the property, now his daughter and stepson or whatever. I said, hey, he's out there. He's hunting. He's not supposed to, he's not supposed to be there. So he drove, he said, I'll take care of it. So he drove over there and told them, you cannot be on this property. And it's been going on for three years. This guy trespassing illegally. So now that is done deal. So there's been no trespassers over there. I go over. I check the barns because they've been opened and make sure no homeless people or anybody is... I'm just protecting the property because I live around the corner from it. I don't plow it anymore. I've never made any money from it. I don't have any... Anything going on that I have a special interest in this piece of property other than I thought it was the ideal place to put the battery storage facility. Yes, I will admit that. And I still think it's the perfect place. But, you know, I wasn't doing anything wrong to get pulled in for ex parte communication. You know? Sandy herself had Sarah Martin come to our meeting one night. Obviously, they were talking. That's ex parte communication. We didn't know we were coming as a board. That should've gone through the zoning administrator, and the zoning administrator didn't do it. So, that's the same thing. But, you know, this is 15 things against me that I'm just trying to support my community the best I can. And I guess I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm not gonna say anymore, Greg. So, any other comments? In that case, I think we should move on. Any other business, Kyle?
None this time, sir.
Okay. We are now in citizen comment. And I won't read it again. You know what I said the first time.
Hi. So... I don't wanna throw shade, but I know I've been saying since January that Commissioner Sherwood has a conflict of interest with that property. I've been saying it since January. Yeah, I don't know. That's just... That's a long time to not understand that you're doing wrong and maybe you should correct it. Instead, you wanna throw shade at other people while they weren't even commissioners and post on Facebook about all the losses we're gonna have, showing a clear bias and conflict of interest. Yet, you're confused tonight. That's crazy to me. I know that this board has been working for a long time to fix this ordinance. And I know that there is one person on this board that has been really bent on not letting it go through. Even so much as lying, saying he didn't talk to the superintendent of the school board. When I was there, he cornered the superintendent after the meeting. You can lie to everybody, but you can't lie to people that were there. As far as not having any earned income from that property, you admitted tonight that you hunt the property that is gainful, that is neat in your freezer, that is money. So, you got called out, and then you just try to blame it on somebody else. Pretty crappy. I mean, it's time to grow up, man.
Thank you. Any other citizen comment? If not, then I will close citizen comment and move on to the next item on our agenda, updates from other boards. Sandy?
I have not seen the agenda for Monday night's board meeting. And I don't know if it's out because we've been in meetings since 3 o'clock. So, I don't have any comments for it. I'm sorry. It's been a busy day. Thank you.
I don't have any comments on the zoning meeting because we're gonna have one this month, but we haven't had one since July. Casey's not here, so I guess we don't really have any training updates, do we? Kyle?
Just the M A P conference next week. For those who are attending, it's a training conference. It's informational as well. It is at the Calmlessy-Radisson Wednesday through Friday. I believe some of you may be signed up only for Thursday. Something our... Some of our colleagues have noted that because this draws 5, 6, 700 people, parking at the Radisson may be an extreme challenge. So, I know for us personally going, we're going to park elsewhere, knowing that we probably will not get a spot at the Radisson, especially with all the other staff. So, if you are going, just be mindful that it may be problematic to park at the Radisson if that's what you were thinking initially. So...
Okay. Future action items?
The only other thing, Mr. Chair, on that is we've received an application for a conditional rezoning. We're going through that right now. The review, I believe that will be scheduled for November 13th for the public hearing on that. And we've also received a application for site plan review for, I think it's gonna be an indoor baseball training facility. So, those are probably intended to come most likely on November 13th.
Okay. Next, we're moving to planning commissioner comments. Amber, you wanna start?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Well?
I do, but I'm not going to.
Good job.
Well, I got things to say to Mr. Knight, but I'll take care of that later.
Greg? Nothing further.
Joseph?
No comment.
James?
No comment.
Sandy?
I just want to thank Attorney Tholl, Catherine, Kyle, and Casey, and all of us for all the work we did on this. And tonight, it was kind of funny when somebody said we'd been working on this ordinance for nine months. I said, "The baby's born." I am so glad to be done with this. We have had so many meetings and kept us all busy. So, I just want to thank even the moratorium committee. I mean, I know some of them kind of petered out at the end and didn't keep coming. But, you know, for what it's worth, everybody that was here and involved, just a thank you.
It made a difference with everybody involved.
Yes.
I would like to commend everybody on the commission for all the work they've done. I think we've done a great job at trying to appease and put it where we thought it would be best. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks.
Thanks.